Good morning, everybody, and welcome to our January 3, 2023 meeting. And we're going to start off with our pledge of allegiance. And Kathy, would you do us the honor in leading us? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Kathy. Javi, can you turn me down a little bit? Okay, item B, adoption of the agenda.
There are no changes to the agenda.
Javi, can you turn Jen down, too?
I think we're all really high. Test, 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 test.
Speak for yourself. Just kidding.
That's what happens when we start a new year.
Okay, we'll go to item C, call to the public. Chairman?
I will go ahead and move that we adopt the agenda as posted and allow chair to deviate as necessary. I tell you, man, that hi thing got him going.
I'll second that. Any other discussion?
No, sir.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Now we can do call to the public. Is there anybody who would like to address the board who's in the boardroom today? Jeff?
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Just a quick update to beginning of the new year. We're continuing to vaccinate for COVID as well as the flu at our Rio Rico site. We are offering testing there as well. We're starting to see a little bit of a trend downward of our numbers. We thought we were going to see a big spike after the holiday. So far, we haven't seen that. We're hoping that continues. We've seen the downward trend as far as our flu as well as our RSV cases as well. So I just wanted to update the board with that, and hopefully we, yeah, keep our fingers crossed and it stays that way.
Great, thank you very much. Is there anybody else in the boardroom that'd like to address the board? Okay, is there anybody online that would like to address the board? You can hit star nine if you're on the phone, or if you're online, you can raise your hand. Javi, do you see anybody?
No one's here.
Okay. Then we'll move to current events. Supervisor Muleta, happy new year.
Mr. Chairman, happy new year. Happy new year to all, and my best wishes on this new year to our community. First and foremost, we all attended the swearing in of Adrian Fontes, our new Secretary of the State, local person that graduated from Nogales High School. We are proud of Adrian and his accomplishments. I also want to congratulate the University of Arizona Wildcats.
Is that men and women?
Yeah, that's true. Men and women on their victory over our state rival. It's good to have bragging rights, but we move on. On another positive note, I personally look forward, I will be attending the City of Nogales swearing in today, and I genuinely look forward to working with our new mayor, a good friend, George Maldonado. I hope we can make it to where we can work together, combine resources, and help our community. I'm excited about that. And I'm excited about our team and our new year. I look forward to us continuing to work as a team and move forward. And those are my words of the day, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Vice Chairman Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And there's an old adage that says, "He who laughs last laughs the past." It wasn't, it wasn't a blowout. It was a nine-point loss by ASU at U of A, so.
It was a good game.
It was a good game, so they're the fifth-ranked team in the nation. We're not ranked, so it was pretty close. And I saw number one went down to Rutgers by one point, so. Anyway, and then, of course, you saw all the bowl games that we saw, and Pac-12 was, I think, only one team won. But anyway, I want to wish everyone a very healthy, safe, and prosperous 2023. It's going to be very interesting what happens here this coming year, as we saw that we had a governor that was sworn in, Mrs. Katie Hobbs, or Mrs. Katie Hobbs. Of course, Adrian Fontes, who is a local product of our school system. He's a former Marine. He was AmeriCopa County Recorder at one time. And it was great that the oath that was taken here on Friday is memorable for many reasons. I don't think that this community has ever had a position of authority elected as Adrian has, so that was good. The second thing, it was my birthday, and so it's even more memorable that I will always remember that on my birthday, the Secretary of State got sworn in on the steps of our 1904 courthouse, so that is great. You know, it's, I'm looking forward to seeing how we can begin to bridge many of our legislative priorities with the Democratic governor and a Republican-held legislature. Even though it is held, it's not a huge majority, so my hope is that they will work in a very bipartisan way to be able to meet the needs of this great state and help us at the county level be able to continue to move forward and continue to provide services, so. And to my two colleagues, you know, as we come into this year, I wish you a lot of health, a lot of prosperity as we move forward. And finally, as we get the opportunity to attend the swearing in of Mayor Maldonado this evening, I am just as hopeful as my colleague Supervisor Muleta that we will be able to sit at the same table for a change and be able to find things in common that we can move this community forward and create opportunities for all of its residents, so. Mr. Chairman, I conclude. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I also, as my two boardmates told you, we all attended the swearing in of Adrian Fontes. I'd like to thank Jennifer for pulling that together for us at the steps of the old county courthouse, and thank everybody for attending. We have people from the city, from the county, and from the business community. Judge Soto came down from Tucson to do the swearing in, and it was a really, it's a really great event, and it's good to have a local participating in state government at that level. And that's, congratulations to Mayor Maldonado, elect Maldonado, who will soon be Mayor Maldonado as he gets sworn in this evening, and I look forward to attending that as well. Madam Manager.
Mr. Chairman, we forgot to congratulate our incoming recorder, who officially takes over today, and that's Ms. Anita Moreno. I know she was sworn in last week, so we have.
And here she is.
And here she is, right on cue.
Right on cue.
Congratulations, Mrs. Moreno, on being the reporter for Santa Cruz County.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. It was perfectly timed, Anita.
Couldn't have been better. Madam Manager.
Actually, I put the key to the door.
Oh, okay.
Just happy new year to everyone. I also.
There's a lot of energy around here.
No, I turned it off. I just wanted to say happy new year. I attended the swearing in. That's it.
Item E, flood control.
Mr. Chairman, I will move that we recess our regular session and convene it to the flood control district.
I will second.
Have a motion to second any discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item one, director's report. Angie, good morning, happy new year.
Good morning, and happy new year. Good morning, everybody. Came to report. Unfortunately, I don't have all the stats for the annual rainfall, but I will have it for next month. Still collecting the data from somebody else. This month, this last month, we had a little above average, so our watershed had 1.54, but our county itself, if we just look at our county itself, had 1.67 of rain. And that didn't include Saturday, so I'm waiting for that one, too. I will update it as I go along. As far as the Effron Canyon project goes, we have a quarterly project that is, quarterly report that will be due this month, and as soon as I have that information, I will also provide it to you. The SOQ, while we're still wrangling with that, and that will, we'll see what that holds next month. Nogales wash study, the nice thing is, FEMA has recently communicated to us that they did accept our information, and they will be assigning a new case number and for the remodeling of the downtown. El Potero Creek, they also are looking at our 2D modeling for the FEMA maps through Chula Vista and through Peake Kitchen, and again, it looks like they are going to allow us for the 2D modeling on that area. And the 404 permit, they're, they're going to accept it, and the nice thing is, it'll give us a five-year maintenance period, which is nicer than one year. So this has taken a while, so that's going on. And I think you probably saw the new project there, the San Cayentano Innovation Campus, and that one is also new to me. So when you get a chance, look into it, and I will have more information for you at our next study session. As far as flood hazard information sheets, we had 123, 14 in the city, 101 in the county, and eight in the town of Patagonia. We had three site reviews, one in the city and two in the county. We had 16 floodplain use permits, five in the city and 11 in the county, and there was one drainage report in our county. And I believe Carolyn is not here.
She's on the Zoom.
Oh, she's on the Zoom?
Yeah.
Okay. And, but I didn't get ahold of Juan, but that is my report. Any questions?
Do we have a report from the City of Nogales?
No.
Okay. Carolyn, I see you're online. Do you want to give us a report from the town of Patagonia?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, and greetings to all the supervisors and to county staff and to the public who are present. And Angie mentioned rain totals, so I just totaled up here at my house in Patagonia, and I had 25.09 inches for 2022. That wasn't on the official report, but of interest, I hope. Today, I wanted to give a summary report of flood and flow committee activity during December, and you have this in writing as well. The Patagonia Regional Flood Control Project feasibility study, the update on that is the town of Patagonia representatives, Town Manager Ron and Town Engineer Bill O'Brien, and I will be meeting with County Manager Jennifer St. John and Public Works Director Jesus Valdez on January 24 to review the project status. The other item that we have pending, amongst others, is the floodplain permit application for South 32's Cross Creek Connector Road. And the agreement between the county and South 32 for the land donation, the last update we had from South 32 was that it had not yet been signed, so the application has not been submitted. The University of Arizona Water Research Center continues to work with us on a drought response plan for a water-resilient community, and they have presented a draft document that explains how to review the Department of Water Resources website. And the flood and flow research team is working with the Forest Service to draft some watershed restoration action plans. And also, at the last meeting, South 32's hydrologist, Tomas Good, presented a, the information that is publicly available from the South 32 reports that they have done. And I wanted to let you know, too, that the next committee meeting is scheduled for January 12, and at that meeting, I will relinquish my role as chairperson and secretary, and imagine me doing a happy dance, please. I will remain on the committee as a representative for Patagonia Area Resource Alliance. The towns engineer, Bill O'Brien, from NextGen Engineering, will be the incoming chairperson, and Town Manager Ron has agreed to take over the scribe duties, so this will be the last time I'll speak to you on this matter, and I appreciate all that we do. And as was said earlier, I look forward to a year of the county and the town working together on very important water issues. So, thank you. And Town Manager Ron is on. I don't know if he has anything he wanted to add, if you wanted him to do that, but thank you all. If you have any questions?
No questions. Thank you very much, Carolyn. Thank you very much for your service on this committee.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any public comment in the flood, in the flood control department? Nobody in the room? Anybody online?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Hmm. It's Neil DeLuca. Neil, I think we have an audio problem. You're getting, we're getting a lot of feedback. Can you fix that on your end?
Let me see. How about now?
Yeah, that's much better.
Okay. Let me just turn my phone down. Maybe it would help. Can you hear me?
Yep, that's very clear now. Thank you. You have three minutes.
I just wanted to bring to your attention the crossing on Cheva siding into Santa Cruz River. We live on Colton Lane, and we lived there for a number of years, and it seems like I've called county maintenance numerous times, and it appears to me the most they've done is either push the dirt back in the riverbed or added sand or loose gravel, which is like driving through snow. And the last time I called in December, I explained to the lady, it wasn't Ange, I don't know who it was, that I recently had spine surgery, and I get tossed around just crossing the river. I'm not driving, my wife is. So I was just like to bring to your attention that, you know, maybe there's something that can be done to, to just make the crossing a little smoother. The flow of the river has increased. Normally, it would be dry half the year. Now it's not. I'm not sure where the water is coming from, where it's discharging from, but that is a problem. And, and sometimes, like on New Year's Eve, we had guests that didn't want to come because they couldn't cross the river. They didn't want to cross the river. They were scared. Now, 2023, you know, I don't know, there's a lot of money and grant money available, so nobody's asking for a bridge, just to cross, you know, without getting tossed around. Well, that's all I got to say. Thank you, and happy new year.
Thank you, Mr. DeLuca. We can't respond to you, but we'll talk to our Public Works Director.
Okay, thank you.
If you can respond to some of that, if you don't mind.
You'd like to address the board for call to the public at flood control? Yes. We can't respond.
I understand.
Thank you, Dan Dellenjess. Most of you know me already. Appreciate your allowing me to speak. With regards to the Chevett siding, I'm hoping to, I have been talking to Valdez and your Public Works Department about making improvements to that crossing, and Neil is my neighbor. I also live up there. Where the water's coming from is with the increase of population in Nogales and we manage their sewage, there's a lot more water being discharged into the river. So instead of the river, the crossing being dry three, or wet three weeks out of the year, it's wet all the time. So there's always water running in it. It's an unintended consequence of managing Nogales Sonora sewage. And because of that, we have this issue. There's water there all the time, and it's not just a little bit of water, it's a lot of water. And it's very bumpy, and yes, Neil has issues there, and we all do. I had to use four-wheel drive yesterday to get through. So we'd like to get it improved, and we're going to work as a community to try to make that happen. Anything you can do to help us, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the flood board under public comment?
Mr. Chairman, I will move that we adjourn our flood control district and convene regular session.
I'll second.
Have a motion to second any discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Aye, motion carries. Item F, department reports and activities. Item one, finance, cash investments expenditures and revenue reports. Maricio, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The cash and investment report. The general fund has an overall balance of $19,507,494 with an investment amount of just a little bit over $10 million. The road fund has an overall balance of $772,626 with an investment amount of $7,000. The flood control district fund has an overall balance of $1,199,888 with an investment amount of $267,000. The jail district fund has an overall balance of $328,819 with an investment amount of just a little, little bit over $1 million. Total for all funds, overall balance $45,704,378 with an investment amount of $13,557,48. For an estimated end of the month, end of the month balance of $15,709,567.
Okay, are there any other questions?
Any idea how we're doing with our property tax collections?
The property tax collections have been coming in normally like they have been in the past years with the same percentage, Mr. Chair. Correct.
It is consistent.
It is consistent, correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And we'll move on to item two, workforce development update. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone, and happy new year.
Good morning, happy new year.
Within this last couple of months, Arizona at work has undergone several changes, including hiring all new frontline staff. As our new team works on familiarizing themselves with a program and receiving the required training, we are committed to providing all available services to our clients. Our last staff to be hired is our program manager, who will be starting next week, making this our complete team. With this, I'm looking forward to what our new staff will bring to our program. With the produce season starting and the holidays taking place, traffic in our office has gone down significantly. We are currently averaging around 764 clients for the month and an average of 191 clients a week, and I see these numbers going up as we start this week. Our staff outreach activities continue to happen when requested until our staff is fully trained. I am targeting the end of January for our staff to complete all necessary training and to start going out to visit schools and employers to provide these services. Our current in-school youth program resumes, and all our participants have been doing great. With the spring semester starting, we are focusing on getting staff to visit local high schools to provide services to those students ready to graduate. We continue to work diligently to bring in more out-of-school youth. We currently registered a total of seven out-of-school youth participants in late November to start the new EMT Fire Academy that are, and are happy to announce that with the help of Rio Rico Fire District and the Topeka Fire District, we have been able to register Rio Rico Fire District as our first local training provider in Santa Cruz County. The process for them to be part of the state-eligible training provider list is lengthy, but we were able to get them approved just in time to provide their enrollment to these participants. In early December, our state partners, together with the Department of Labor, reached out to see if we had any interest in applying to be part of a youth systems-building academy. This academy will provide local workforce systems and their community partners with targeted and individualized training and technical assistance to explore, design, test, implement, or scale system-level approaches to engage and support young people in the workforce, including improving youth employment opportunities and outcomes, increasing understanding equitable policies and practices for youth career pathways, as well as the quality job means for young workers. The opportunity for this academy is open for self-nominations. I will be working diligently with local partners in getting our self-nomination application in by January 13 with the hope that we are one of the lucky communities chosen to be part of it. This is, this no wrong-door approach will help our community holistically address young people's needs and set them on a path to career success. Training and technical assistance through this academy will support the convening and facilitation of community partners to kickstart or accelerate this systems-building work. Santa Cruz County Workforce Development also submitted our workforce development local plan modification in late September, and I'm happy to announce that the State Workforce Arizona Council approved with no issues. I'm also happy to announce that we completed modifying our IFA with our partners. The IFA was updated to reflect the budgetary expenses that all four partners are incurring while being housed in our one-stop center. This included updating building expenses and new pay rates for our office receptionists. All partners agreed and signed this IFA. We continue to attend various partner meetings collaborating at local and state levels in an attempt to identify specific needs and/or skills that employers are seeking with the ultimate vision of strengthening our local workforce. With this, I end my report by saying I'm looking forward to start working with other departments within the county to help bring more awareness of opportunities we have if we start collaborating for the benefit of Santa Cruz County residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you. Item one, discussion possible action for authorization to fill vacant office manager position, and it's from the Sheriff's Department.
I'll approve.
Second.
Have a motion to second any discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously.
And it is a budgeted item.
It's budgeted, yes. Item two, discussion possible action to approve intergovernmental agreement contract number CTR 057221, amendment number one with the Arizona Department of Health Services for COVID-19 ELC, enhancing detection expansion, and to extend the agreement through May 1, 2024.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion to second any discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item three, discussion possible action to approve agreement contract number modification one to MRC RISE 22-1874 with National Association of County and City Health officials to extend the agreement through June 30, 2023.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion to second any other discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Item four, discussion possible action to approve agreement number DBFFY 23L 22CH 31313 with Arizona Department of Administration for one-time payments to line-level deputies and detention officers employed by the Santa Cruz County Sheriff's Office effective October 1, 2023 through June 30, 2025 in the amount of $650,000.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion to second under discussion. Madam Manager? Maricio?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is an agreement with the Arizona Department of Administration with pass-through funds from the Arizona Department of Military Affairs. They're going to provide the county $650,000, up to $650,000, to provide $10,000 for in-line deputies and detention officers and $5,000 for new hires. Based on the, on the agreement, this is determined by, by the sheriff, and there's some eligibility requirements there stipulated in the contract, and we want to seek your approval for, to start the payment process. It's a quarterly payment, and then we can start, you know, when, when the board approves that.
So this is the retention and attraction money that the Arizona State Legislature passed last year?
Correct.
Okay.
So how does this impact our contributions to the ARS, to the retirement system? Does that come out of county pocket?
It, it does not. This, this, the, correct, yeah. When we had the discussion, I just wanted to confirm with, with Mr. St. John, but it does not, it does, this does not have any effect on, on any, any Arizona retirement.
So this is basically a bonus for people to stay?
Correct, correct. Interrecruit, correct.
Okay, because I know that anytime you pay, I mean, you're doing that kind of, I want to make sure that you don't get any other hidden or get hit at the end. I know that we've done some things to minimize our liability, but I don't want it. but I don't want it to necessarily increase. But if it's just a retention bonus, then I think, I think it's done other places, then it would be okay. Mr. St. John?
The state received a legal opinion that these payments were non-pensionable. So we did have to do extensive work to work through that because originally it was affecting the pension.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item five, Discussion Possible Action Recommendation of Approval for Application for Liquor License for Pigeon's Liquor Store in Rio Rico.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion to second any discussion?
We didn't ask the clerk if everything was in order.
Madam Clerk?
Everything is in order.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item six, Tax Valuation Adjustments A and B?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion to second any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item seven, Minutes from 12/20/22, regular meeting, 12/20/22, 8:30 a.m. special meeting, and 12/20/22, 12 p.m. special meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion to second any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item eight, Demands. Supervisor Malera.
Mr. Chair, move to approve demands totaling $488,953.36, of which $188,689.97 are from the General Fund.
Second.
Have a motion to second any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Maricio, pay those bills.
Move to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Have a motion to second any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are adjourned.